County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence and the performance of the National Anthem by the West Springfield High School Chamber Orchestra under the direction of Jennifer Herrera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was beautiful. Thank you, parents, for sharing your children with us tonight. And is Mr. Mukai here this evening, our wonderful principal from West Springfield? Yes, thank you very much. Talented young students, thank you. The School Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's regular meeting. Therefore, I will not certify. No, we've already done that. Announcements, a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Ms. Palchak and Ms. Schultz will not be with us this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I will now call on Ms. Vittacanda for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This Saturday, we're celebrating Veterans Day. Formerly Armistice Day, Veterans Day is the anniversary of the armistice which was signed in the Forest of Campagne by the Allies and the Germans in 1918, ending World War I after four years of conflict. At 5:00 AM on Monday, November 11, 1918, the Germans signed the armistice and order that was issued for all firing to cease so that the hostilities of the First World War ended. The day began with the laying down of arms, blowing of whistles, impromptu parades, and closing of places of business. All over the globe, there were many demonstrations. No doubt the world had never before witnessed such rejoicing. Veterans Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all of those living and dead who served with the United States Armed Forces. The School Board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honor veterans and recognize the role of the military in American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans and members of the school community on active military duty. Next week, we are celebrating American Education Week. American Education Week was established in 1921 by the National Education Association to raise public awareness about the importance of public education in America. This year's theme, Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility, reminds all Americans of the importance of public education and offers the opportunity to celebrate public education and honors those who ensure that every child receives a quality education. As part of the observance, community leaders are invited to serve as educators for a day in order to get a glimpse at a day in the life of a school employee. American Education Week features a special observance on each day of the week, including parents, education support professionals, and substitute educators. Next week, we're also celebrating Geography Awareness Week. Established by a joint resolution of the U.S. Congress in 1987, Geography Awareness Week is observed in November and promotes what geography is, why it is important, and the relevance of a geographic education in preparing citizens to understand and debate pressing social and environmental issues and problems. 2017 marks the 30th anniversary and will be celebrated from November 12 through the 18th. This year's theme is the Geography of Civil Rights Movements, which mainstreams the discussion around human rights within the study of geography. Thank you.
I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders to recognize our wonderful school psychologist.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School psychologists are uniquely qualified members of school teams serving students, staff, and families. School psychologists receive specialized advanced graduate preparation that includes coursework and practice experiences relevant to both psychology and education. They apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to change lives by taking actions -- I'm sorry -- by taking actions to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. In alignment with IGNITE, school psychologists help individuals realize their own abilities, develop the skills they need to cope with the normal stresses of life, to work productively and fruitfully, and be valuable contributors in the community. School psychologists collaborate with school teams in the development of universal prevention practices that foster resiliency, increase educator understanding of social-emotional development, reduce barriers to learning, and increase student protective factors. They support effective behavior management leading to improved school climate, respond to crises, and teach and implement trauma-informed practices. School psychologists utilize expertise in data collection and analysis to identify concerns and to monitor interventions which may include the formal evaluation process. In their work with students, school psychologists help students develop the social, emotional, and life skills necessary to realize personal achievement and growth, and to build resilience and a sense of belonging. Through delivery of direct services using evidence-based practices, school psychologists provide individual and group counseling to address challenges and concerns. School psychologists consult with staff and parents to further their understanding of complex student needs and to help them develop the necessary skills to appropriately respond to student needs. School psychologists support families by sharing information about student skill development and wellness. They develop interventions that may be used at home, and they connect families with available community resources. All children and youth can face problems from time to time related to learning social relationships, making difficult decisions, or managing emotions such as feeling depressed, anxious, worried, or isolated. School psychologists help students, families, educators, and members of the community understand and resolve both long-term chronic problems and short-term issues that students may face. They are highly skilled and a ready resource in the effort to ensure that all FCPS children and youth thrive in school, at home, and in life. At this time, I would like to invite staff from the Office of Psychology Services to join me at the dais for a picture with the board.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their remarks and comments with decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. Tonight, we have seven citizens who have signed up to speak and then four video testimonies. The first speaker is Kurt Finkenstadt.
My name is Kurt Finkenstadt. I am a junior at Jeb Stuart High School. I'm a member of the cross-country team, the crew team, National Honor Society, and several clubs, including its academic. I'm here to discuss the One Fairfax policy and its predecessor, the One Fairfax Resolution, since they are the basis for the Stuart name change. This policy has brought division and censorship. It will cause financial hardship throughout the county, as no doubt even more schools will need a fresh moniker. I feel very strongly about this issue, and I'm disappointed with this board's decision to rename Jeb Stuart to Justice High. The School Board ignored the views of the majority of students and the will of the community. In a 2015 survey, 60% of the student body voted against a name change. Many students were too afraid to speak out, and people that did, such as myself, faced intimidation, were slandered as racists, and faced shunning by our peers. On September 16, the community held a vote. The winning name was Stuart High School, with 917 votes, compared to the runner-up, which was six different variations of Thurgood Marshall, with only 763 votes combined. The School Board completely ignored the democratic process and decided to rename the school Fancy Free to Justice instead of the more popular Stuart. Additionally, this change also compounds an already large budgetary problem. Changing the name to Justice will cost at least $800,000 of donations. However, to date, just 1% has been pledged. However, to be fair, any change will cost at least half a million dollars. There are 30 additional Fairfax schools with Confederate names or slave-related names. This only diverts much-needed funds from already cash-strapped programs, which rely heavily on community booster support. This is a million dollars wasted and not compelling need. This decision sends a message to the young minds of Jeb Stuart that their voices and efforts and their votes didn't matter, and that only the opinions of a select few count, and that politicians cannot be trusted with the wishes of their constituents. This isn't what students were taught in government class. It is a rude awakening. The name should be Stuart. For example, I will quote one of the board members. "In the spirit of compromise and in recognition of the need to minimize costs as well as the desire for continuity by alumni, staff requests that the Stuart community consider Stuart High School as the new name. Due to this proposal and because of the results of the referendum, we thought we would be new Stu." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Haseeb Ali Khan, to be followed by Robert Rigby.
Good evening. I will be talking for 14 of my peers from our school, and I'll be giving about 14 quotes from students at our school about the topic that he talked about. The first quote is, "I'm a sophomore at Jeb Stuart High School, and I do not want the name Justice. In the past few years, we have grown stronger as Stuart." Next quote, "Being a senior, I don't have to worry much about my brother Jeremy. But my brother Jeremy passed away as a Raider from Jeb Stuart, and we will always be Raiders." Next quote, "I don't like the name Justice, and most of the school doesn't like it either. We didn't pick Justice, we wanted Stuart." The next quote, "Why is the School Board picking on us only? What about Lee and even Fairfax? All well-known slave owners. Our county has the same name as a slave owner, Lord Fairfax." Another quote, "If they believed in Justice, the School Board wouldn't have picked Justice. It's injustice as they are not listening to us." Next quote, "If the children of the board members came to our schools, the parents would understand the priorities of our school." Next quote, "Why are we wasting all this money if we have food-deprived households, mice, cockroaches, damaged bathrooms, old classrooms, and teachers without classrooms? Is it that hard to point out the obvious problems that are greater than a name?" Next quote, "Oh, wow, this is great. They all say that it would be privately funded, and they aren't even 5% to the money goal. Where are all the NAACP and other advocate groups now? Everything is offensive to them until money is a factor." Next quote, "I'm working at minimum wage, and now I'm going to have to pay more taxes for a name that none of us wanted. I helped my father bring food to the table, and now we have to bear the cost of this name. It's injustice for us to experience all of this pain. Why is the county doing this? We have other priorities." Next quote, "People vote for Justice Thurgood Marshall High School. They didn't vote for Justice? They're making that up themselves." Next quote, "I'm upset because it is injustice to the students who came out to vote to later find out that their voices do not matter. It's really frustrating when the 'adults' in charge of our county are not listening to us." Next quote, "Please listen to me. Please, please, please. Why aren't you picking what we wanted? You guys don't care. You won't have to bear what the cost of the name change. You won't have it on your resume. Why not let the people that will be affected make the decision?" Next quote, "What has happened to our county? I love Fairfax County. Why did they just ignore us? Do they not care?" Next quote, "They think the mice problem is bad. They have not heard about the cafeteria problems we have in our school. Really, though, it's not that hard to figure out what's more important, the health of our students or a simple name." Ladies and gentlemen, those are all the appropriate quotes I had tonight. As we could tell, most of the students don't really care about the name itself, but instead they care about their voices, the process, and the inability of the board to prioritize actions. Oof. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Rigby.
Good evening, School Board members and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby, and I'm currently one of two Latin teachers at West Potomac High School. I've been an FCPS employee for almost 19 years and am in my 11th year as a Latin instructor. Over the past several years, my amazing colleague Jonathan Chev has been developing and organizing a Latin for dual enrollment class at West Potomac. Last year, as part of the secondary course offerings, you approved that dual enrollment class with a 0.5 grade point average bonus. This made it equivalent to honors classes. Jonathan and his students have been piloting the Latin dual enrollment class this fall. The class is a whopping success. The curriculum Mr. Chev developed in consultation with the college enables students and teacher to dig into Latin literature in detail and explore its intricacies at a collegiate level while developing reading skills in the ancient language. I've lost track. Here is what one student said. "I love dual enrollment Latin. The structure of this class has given me a better understanding of what to expect when I go to college next year, better than any of the six AP classes I've taken through my years at West Potomac." Another student said, "This is a wonderful class that has allowed me to further my Latin knowledge in a more challenging and serious environment than regular Latin IV." The only problem with dual enrollment this year was a rumor going around among parents that the University of Virginia admissions office penalized students for taking the class because the GPA boost was not the same as that for Advanced Placement. Tonight, in the approval of changes to the secondary course offerings and the consent agenda, you will change that to a 1.0 for dual enrollment classes, maybe making the class more inviting to students and parents. Several other Latin teachers in the county have asked about this class and are looking to start programs of their own in the next few years. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity for our students.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Nye.
As a parent of two students at the county school system, I want to express my feedback of the Fairfax, One Fairfax policy. By reading on the surface, I was amazed and amused by the flowery, fancy language, sometimes deliberately written clauses. By looking, thinking deeper, I found out this policy could lead to unwanted consequence and unintended harm to our students, especially my children. I will raise three questions and make three suggestions. Question number one, the policy said they have a widespread of oppressionism and racism. Where's the base? Majority of schools, over half of the populations, form multicultural, multi-ethnicity. My children enjoy a harmonious and peaceful life. So where's oppression come from? Well, I understand that these two young souls are facing oppressionist retaliations from the super liberals, I understand that part. Question number two, there are so many laws and regulations from federal, state, to county promoting racial equality. Why we need another layer of the policy? The money could be used wisely somewhere else. Number three, even if we designed a program to implement this policy, where to get the money from? We just spent a million dollar trying to change a high school name. We still face oversized classroom, my children in the trailer room, and underpaid teachers. So where are you getting money from? As a taxpayer, I don't want this money spent, single-dime on this thing. So I raise three suggestions to you. Number one, all three prohibitions or restrictions. Number one, we should not allow any quota to the AAP or Thomas Jefferson High School because we foster the discipline, the high education standard, merit-based, not on other criteria. Proposal number two, we should not allow any anti-humanity policies, policies such as allowing a boy's going to the ladies', a girl's changing room or locker room. That's ridiculous. And proposal number three, we should not lower our educational standard because if we do that, all our students will lag in further behind to other countries and our nations such as China, Japan. Because we must foster a discipline, higher standard, hard-working work ethics, not the other we're on. Otherwise, we'll never make our American education great again. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joe Pishoda.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Brivant. I am Joe Pishoda, a retired history teacher and member of the Lake Barcroft Community and father of a 2012 Jeb Stuart graduate. This evening, I am here to address the issues surrounding the One Fairfax Resolution and the One Fairfax Policy. For those not familiar, the One Fairfax Policy is an ambiguous-worded, hodgepodge, feel-good, flowery CYA gook that can manipulate and be used to justify any new program, policy, and action that the School Board and school system want with no accountability. The Board already showed how they will employ these tactics through stealth and non-transparency as they did when they used the predecessor of One Fairfax Resolution, which was hastily passed in July 28, 2016, without sufficient public notification or advanced copy use of content to allow the public participation in debate and/or feedback to justify the name change of Jeb Stuart High School. Further, ignoring the no-compelling need and ignoring the lack of finding of sufficient community support for such action or proper engagement, again, without taxpayers' accountability. Being led by Sandy Evans, the Board repeatedly violated its own rules, regulations, and policies and violated Regulation 8170.7. These facts were publicly acknowledged in a work session, board meeting, to and by the superintendent. The Board's response to him was that they would fix the regulation and get it right the next time. Stuart was the sacrificial lamb. Which of the other 30 identified Fairfax County names will be the next time? Under the disguise of the One Fairfax, what high school are you going to torment next? Thomas Jefferson, Fairfax, Woodson, and so on? Stuart High School, above all others in Fairfax County, has been recognized by the National Geographics, by local and national newspapers, by the community, students and alumni, and even by the Board itself. The Jeb Stuart has been the living proof that it has always been a living One Fairfax policy for decades. As a happy, congenial, multicultural school, until suddenly now, it is a very unhappy school. It never needed the name changed. What this Board needs is a change. With all the -- excuse me -- behind-the-scenes collusion and outside forces such as the NAACP and stealth decisions, the Citizens of Government for Integrity LLC, a nonpartisan group, is now petitioning for the Mason District recall of Sandy Evans for distracting the School Board from its educational mission, violating the community's trust following an unwanted agenda and dividing the community, neighbor against neighbor, student against student, and family members against each other. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Helen Graff.
My name is Helen Graff. I am a parent with children and FCPS. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight to provide public comment on the newly proposed One Fairfax policy. After having studied the proposed document, it is recommended that it not be passed. Although it might sound cheery and happy, it's actually potentially very harmful, wasteful, and expensive due to its ambiguous and vagueness, which seems almost deliberate. Under its current ambiguous and vague language, it would appear that the One Fairfax policy could potentially be used to unfairly penalize high achievers. And I have a child that is in the AAP program, and I have to say, it's concerning. And I have a child that is in the AAP program, and I have to say it's concerning that it may penalize him. I have other children that I also want to have a quality, high education, and I am very concerned that they may not get that chance because of the potential penalizing of high achievers. It may potentially discriminate against other races, religions, sex, and countries of origin, waste money on unneeded new programs when other programs already exist and are being poorly managed, continue unwanted costly school name changes like Jeb Stewart that did not raise grades but divide neighborhoods, discriminate, harass, and penalize many strict religious adherences that do not agree with sexual orientation and gender identity, politicking the schools, and result in numerous illegities and lawsuits on many different grounds. For example, the draft One Fairfax Policy disturbingly includes gender identity, which is more properly medically known as gender dysphoria, which has no legal basis and can actually place the school system and officials at risk of legal liability and lawsuits, and even potential criminal actions in violation of existing law by attempting to allow males into female bathrooms and locker rooms. Please be aware that President Obama's misguided Dear Colleague letter from 2016 that attempted to redefine Title IX was rescinded in February 2017. In addition, there are numerous existing case laws that demonstrate granting students access to opposite-sex-changing areas could subject schools to legal liability for violating students' rights and parents' rights, not to mention possibly criminal charges. It is very concerning that the school board and system would want to spend time and money to create such a vague and reckless document like the One Fairfax Policy, which calls for the open-ended amounts of spending on more undefined programs, policies, and actions when there already exists many other programs, policies, and regulations. I will. Instead of, I urge you to have integrity. Do a better job at managing existing programs, resources, and policies before wadding into creating another harmful policy. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. The next speaker is Colin O'Grady.
My name is Colin O'Grady. I am a FCPS high school teacher and a parent of an FCPS kindergartner who I believe is at home watching and listening tonight. I'm here to speak for the need for clear policies that recognize our transgender students as members of our school community. At the beginning of a recent school year, my wife, who teaches at the same school, let me know that a transgender student who had been in her class was going to be in my class. My wife told me about the student's preferred name and preferred pronoun so that I could make the student feel welcome on the first day of school. Being dead-named, which is being called by a name by which someone no longer identifies, can be a devastating experience for transgender people because it invalidates who they are. I wanted to make sure that that did not happen to this kid who would now be my student. When the young man did not wind up in my class, I tracked down the teacher he did wind up with and passed the information along so that that teacher could make him feel welcome. I'm telling this story because whether or not this student was welcome to his first day of school, which should be a given for all of our students, was dependent upon coincidence. It was dependent upon the fact that he happened to end up in the classroom of a teacher who happened to be married to a teacher he had had before, and that new teacher happened to know the teacher he wound up with. We're relying on happenstance. We're relying too much on hoping that the students wind up in a supportive teacher's classroom, in an understanding teacher's classroom, in an aware teacher's classroom, and that that teacher knows the right teachers to pass the information along to. Without any of this coincidence happening, that student isn't welcome to school on the first day of the school year. In order to teach my students, I need to know who they are. I need to know what they're curious about and what obstacles they're struggling with. I'm a humanities teacher, and I need kids to see that my classroom embraces all of their humanity so that they feel like the classroom and the world around them belong to them. We just had my daughter's first parent-teacher conference, and going in, I didn't want to hear about assessments or data. I wanted to hear that my daughter's teacher knew her. I wanted to know that she's in a classroom that encourages her to explore who she is, who she wants to be, and what she wants from the world around her. I want to know that she's in a classroom that teaches her to engage with the world as a human being. And in order to do that, that classroom absolutely must honor who she is as a human being. This is our goal in FCPS for all of our students, and right now, we're not doing that for our transgender students. We're failing them. We need clear policies that recognize them as who they are and encourage them to engage with the world around them, including the school community, as who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have four video testimonies. The first is presented by Alice Gao, and this video is a little longer than three minutes, and Ms. Gao understood that we would only allow three minutes, so it will end at three minutes. So the first.
Hi, I'm Alice Gao. One Fairfax Policy, the commitment to promote fairness, justice, and the formation of public policy that results in all residents regardless of age, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic status. Reading from your beautifully worded One Fairfax Policy, I couldn't tell if my children will be penalized for the very core value ingrained in them since birth, work ethic, one common factor that our community has been tightly holding and proudly holding for thousands of years. Over twenty years ago, I landed in this land of opportunity with two suitcases of American dream. It didn't matter that I didn't know any, I didn't have family here. It didn't matter that I will always speak with an accent. It didn't matter that I have to have three jobs to complete my school. As one of all the aspiring immigrant, I believed America is a place where all dreams can come true if you're willing to work really hard. Now I have two children. They tell me every day, "Mom, we work hard, have fun, and doing possible things." My four-year-old knows, "Mom, there's no shortcut." My ten-year-old says, "Life is not fair." However, hard work pays off. Work ethic is work ethic. Work ethic transcends age, race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin. Did you include that in your policy? When my ten-year-old works hard and gets into AAP, is that a crime to be penalized? When our children are willing to practice violin an hour a day and get into advanced orchestra, is that a crime to be penalized? When any child are willing to sacrifice or work hard in their tender year to get into Thomas Jefferson High School, is that a crime to be penalized? If the school might decide to implement a racial-based quota system? When I ask my children these questions, they give me a resounding no to all of the questions. So I'm asking you, if you could put aside your lens of race, age, color, sex, gender identity, what would your answers be? Two thousand five hundred years ago, a historical educator Confucius once said, "Our belief, truth, resides in the core value." What is your core value? I request that Fairfax School Board will insert the language in the Fairfax.
Thank you. The next testimony will be presented by Debbie Ratliff.
One Fairfax. In July 2016, the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors and the Fairfax County School Board jointly adopted the One Fairfax Resolution that directed the development of policies and strategic actions to advance opportunity and achieve racial and social equity in Fairfax County. The policy is intended to inform all other policies and applies to all publicly delivered services in Fairfax County government and in Fairfax County public schools. It is kind of a big deal. The One Fairfax Policy defines expectations for consideration of racial and social equity. It provides a framework to advance equity in alignment with the stated visions and priorities of Fairfax County. Racial and social equity means that all students, regardless of the color of their skin, their economic means, their gender, their gender identity, or any other label that we use to categorize ourselves, are recognized and valued as individuals and welcomed as members of our community. Our collective commitment to racial and social equity means that we recognize that institutional racism exists, and we need to do something about it. Ignoring it won't help. We also recognize the importance of social equity for transgender teens. Fairfax County's stated visions and priorities are explained in the strategic plan, IGNITE, that includes a commitment to student success, a caring culture, a premier workforce, and resource stewardship. FCPS inspires and empowers students to meet high academic standards, lead healthy ethical lives, and be responsible and innovative global citizens. I'm proud that the school board's actions to change the name of Jeb Stewart High School to Justice High School to honor the important contributions to the pursuit of justice that have been made by three inspiring individuals proposed by the community, Justice Thurgood Marshall, Barbara Rose Johns, and Colonel Louis G. Mendez, Jr. Thank you. I'm also proud to stand with the Combating Intolerance Class and Social Studies Department at West Potomac High School to welcome Gavin Grimm to speak with FCPS students in December to encourage learning by both cis and trans students. Gavin Grimm was named one of Time Magazine's Most Influential Teens of 2016, and he was named one of Time Magazine's 100 Most Influential People in the World in 2017. He was also a speaker this year at the Law School at William &amp; Mary, a university that's part of the Commonwealth of Virginia's public education system. FCPS is inclusive and does not discriminate. FCPS is committed to end institutional racism. FCPS treats trans students and cis students as full members of our school community. It's healthy and ethical to teach children about the world and welcome all children, cis and trans, into that world and into our FCPS community. We are One Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. The next video is presented by Catherine Stewart, and again, this was a video that does go on after three minutes, and again, the presenter understood that we would cut it off at three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Stewart. I live in the Sully District, and I have three young children. I'm a member of More Recession for Fairfax County. You've heard a lot from us by now. And next Monday, you will be reviewing the 2018 draft Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program in your work session. We at More Recession for Fairfax County have reviewed the document that's on Board Docs, and we would like to see the board add a request for more flexibility for recess to that document. Specifically, we would like you to add the following statement. The Fairfax County School Board supports a wider definition of instructional hours that includes recess rather than excludes it. In addition, the Fairfax County School Board supports a reduction in the minimum annual instructional hours devoted to English, mathematics, science, and history social sciences in elementary school. These two changes would allow flexibility for school divisions to restructure the educational environment based on current research and to improve learning outcomes for students. I have spoken to a number of you about recess policy, as have other members of our group. One of the most common responses that you, the members of the board, have given us is that it's tough to add more recess at the county level because of the way that the State Department of Education has defined instructional hours. Since many of you have actually admitted that this is a concern, we hope that you will list it in your legislative program for 2018. Our proposed statement addresses not only the definition of instructional hours, but also a provision in the standard of accreditation which requires that seventy-five percent of instructional hours are spent on English, math, science, and history and social studies for elementary school students. This minimum percentage must be reduced in order for recess to be added without impacting specials like PE and art. In middle school, the standards of accreditation only require fifty-seven percent of the instructional hours to be devoted to those four core subjects. It doesn't seem necessary for the percentage to be so high in elementary school when it's eighteen percent lower in middle school. Reducing this minimum would not automatically reduce instruction in those subjects either. It would grant you the flexibility to reduce the time spent on those subjects if you deemed it appropriate. Beyond that, a good portion of the time that elementary schoolers currently spend on English or math right now is spent correcting off-task behaviors and performing brain breaks and that kind of thing. If we replaced ten minutes of in-classroom English instruction with ten minutes of recess outside, students would return to the classroom more focused and ready to learn. Educational outcomes would likely be improved, even though less time would technically be spent teaching English. This is why we believe that the minimum percentage of instructional hours spent on those four core subjects should be reduced for elementary school students.
Thank you. The last video testimony is presented by Lee Miller.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about the One Fairfax Policy. Can the One Fairfax Policy promote injustice? When modern judgments are unfairly and fatally applied to historical figures and events for political purposes and taken out of context using falsehoods, distortions, or omitting key facts, it can promote racism, hate, and injustice. We believe One Fairfax Policy has and will use this unprincipled technique to promote injustice. Here is a recent example in FCPS. For two years, Jeb Stewart name-change activists frequently used false and distorted history and presentism to falsely accuse Jeb Stewart and his supporters of being racist and traitors to justify their revengeful actions. Several students defending the name Jeb Stewart complained of having their civil rights violated by being bullied, threatened, and called derogatory and hateful names aimed to silence them. The school board and name-change activists justified their harmful actions by the One Fairfax Resolution. What key facts were omitted? Slavery existed since the advent of humankind. Almost all major civilizations engaged in slavery. Native American Indians practiced slavery prior to the European colonists arriving. The United States inherited the practice of slavery from the European monarchies. Rival black of African tribes would sell prisoners of war to Muslims, Europeans, and Americans. The United States was on the forefront of eradicating slavery in the world. Sadly, even today, there is widespread slavery in parts of the world. More key facts omitted. The founding fathers wanted to eliminate slavery but were unable to achieve consensus. There were many free blacks in Virginia. Some of them owned slaves. Seven states in the Deep South seceded in 1861 due to many differences. Prior to the Civil War in 1861, the legality of secession was unsettled US law. Lincoln fought the Civil War to preserve the Union, not to end slavery. Five border slave states fought for the Union and to preserve slavery in the North. Even more facts omitted. Virginia only seceded after Lincoln asked for 5,000 Virginian troops to suppress by deadly force the growing secession. Lincoln then ordered the Union Army to also invade Virginia. Lincoln emancipated the slaves only in the South to weaken their economies and war effort. Slavery was not banned in the US until after the Civil War in 1865, and dynamics changed during the course of the war. Seven hundred thousand Americans tragically die in the Civil War during a period of history worth learning. The One Fairfax Policy should not be approved as it has already demonstrated the ability to promote racism, hate, and injustice.
Thank you. The next agenda item is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. Oh, yes, I am sorry. We have more. I overlooked Ms. Fataconda. You're right. We have more student representative matters. I'm sorry. We'll go back.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and no problem. As we move into budget discussion starting at this Monday's work session, I'd like us to focus on one specific thing that has affected the students a lot this year, and that's the burden that was imposed by the most recent budget through the form of AP and IB exam fees that students have to pay for after the first six. We do save about $600,000 through this change, but the costs to our school system are far greater since we're no longer able to require the exams for students, and we place the burden on students and families to decide which exams, if any, they are able to afford, especially when exam fees reach about $100 per exam. And while those final exams are definitely not the most important part of the AP and IB experience, that experience isn't complete without the college-style, free-response-based exams that encourage students to refine their knowledge of content and practice applying what they've learned in the classroom. that encourage students to refine their knowledge of content and practice applying what they've learned in the classroom. And even though our teachers around the county are doing an excellent job encouraging students to take these now-optional exams, the decisions to take these exams are ultimately placed on parents and students. And when they reach about $100 each and several hundred dollars each year of high school after students use the six that are paid for by FCPS, students who don't qualify for fee waivers are forced to make a choice each year about which exams they're able to take. And by not taking all the exams they're eligible for, students are forced to limit their flexibility in terms of college credit and their ability to place out of introductory classes in college. For example, a student who originally wanted to be an engineer might have only taken exams for science and math courses so that she could use her essentially six covered exams for the subjects she thought she'd need in college. But if she later decides to pursue a different field, for example, history or government, she wouldn't have those covered AP exams for college, which would have helped her save on tuition and accelerate to higher-level courses. We can't just sit on our hands for a few years and watch AP and IB participation decline all while telling students who have already maxed out their six exams that they're no longer eligible for more students paid by the county. This has been a problem especially for current seniors who have already taken six exams and now have no idea which ones they should choose to take from senior year. It's our responsibility to provide for the full education experience, and a major part of that at the high school level lies in the rigor of our AP and IB exams and IPIB experience, which includes paying for all of our students' APIB exam fees. Moving forward, while we may need to make cuts to different parts of our budget, as we always do, we cannot continue to deprive students of this important academic experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we are on to a confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm... Actually, one motion to confirm the recommended action. And I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to grant the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used a controlled substance at school and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second? Second by Ms. Keys-Gamarra. All those in favor? That is Evans, McLaughlin, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Derinette Kofax, Keys-Gamarra. Abstention? Mr. Wilson. Thank you. That motion passes. Consent agenda. Our adopted Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through Board review, and documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. 6.01. Approve the minutes of the October 26, 2017 regular school board meeting. 6.02. Approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2018-2019 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03. Award a contract for the Timberlane Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Colbert Roofing Corporation in the amount of $473,361 and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01. Adopt the Fairfax County School Board's 2018 state and federal legislative program. 7.02. Adopt the resolution approving the 2018 sale of school bonds and authorize the Chairman or Vice Chairman, with the advice of legal counsel for the school division, to negotiate, execute, deliver, and administer the school board tax certificate and all other documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable, and to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the agenda item. Adopt the One Fairfax Policy as detailed in the agenda item. 7.04. Award a contract for the Herndon High School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Superintendent Matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. A couple of things I wanted to go over this evening with you all. We've gotten some information about the SAT, and I'm proud to report that Fairfax County Public School seniors exceeded again state and national averages on the SAT. The mean score this year was 1185 overall, and that was 90 points above the Virginia average and 141 points above the U.S. average. So really proud of our students and the work they're doing on that national standardized assessment. As part of my school visits tomorrow... Tomorrow is Friday. I continue to do visits. I'll be doing a lot of visits to schools, including schools celebrating Veterans Day and a lot of our Veterans Day activities. Our schools just do a great job in providing students with wonderful learning opportunities around Veterans Day. So I'm looking forward to that, and I want to take a moment to say Happy Veterans Day to all those who have served our country. We thank you for your service. I also want to congratulate again Jeb Plannenberg and the Facilities and Transportation Team. I know there are frequent Board comments during Board Matters around that team. Well, yesterday, they were honored at the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments as a recipient of the 2016 Climate and Energy Leadership Awards. So we can give them a round of applause if you want to do that. Jeb already left? He was here earlier. Well, the $15,000 we were going to present him this evening, I guess we'll have to catch up later. But these awards are given for organizations that engage in projects that are aimed at reducing carbon footprints, fighting against climate change, and are considered exemplary in their field among their peers. So it's great to see FCPS getting an award in this area. We've also won three awards from the Chesapeake Chapter of the National School Public Relations Association. The new website received the highest recognition in Award of Excellence, and the following communication campaigns won honorable mention: the Human Resources Recruitment Campaign and the Great Things Are Happening in FCPS videos. So congratulations to Matt Gilfoyle and his team. I don't know whether Matt was here earlier also this evening, and I want to congratulate him. November is Family Involvement Month. Families and schools are perfect partners for student success, and one of the most important components... It's one of the most important components of student achievement and success is having our parents engaged. I want to thank all the families who are involved with their children in our schools and community. And I like to continue to make sure that everybody in Fairfax County knows that the door is open to our families to partner with us as we prepare our children. I'm continuing our community conversations. I had a great one yesterday in Region 3. Great turnout. And that's part of really trying to make sure as a new superintendent, everybody knows in Fairfax County that I am approachable and accessible when we want to meet their children's needs. Finally, I just have a personal note. You know, when I was a high school principal, I'd often ask people, parents and kids, if they remembered their high school principal. Of course, now as a superintendent, I ask people, do they remember their superintendent? I frequently heard no for principal and no for superintendent. But I wanted you to know today, personally, earlier this week, my high school principal, John K. Wood, who was principal of Minchville High, passed away at 87 years old. He opened Minchville in 1971 when Newport News and the rest of Virginia integrated. So he opened in that first year, bringing together black and white kids across Newport News. I'm also proud to tell you that I remember my principal, not only because he was an outstanding principal in the four years I was there in the '80s, but in 1964, he was the principal for my mother in a segregated Newport News school system in 1964 at Warwick High School. So he served with distinction over three decades. 18 years at Minchville and was the state Virginia Secondary School Principal of the Year. He was a great man and a great principal and a great Virginian, and I just wanted to take time tonight to share with the Fairfax community and really the Commonwealth of Virginia that we've lost a great educator. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for sharing that. That's great. Next are Board Committee reports, and I will call first on Ms. Derinette Kofax for a report on governance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Governance Committee met yesterday, November 8, and we had three agenda items that we completed. We got our first look at the recommendations for modifications to Policy 8335, which is the wireless communications facilities. We heard a little bit about staff's look at assessment of risk involved to this on our school grounds. And we just got the modifications to the policy yesterday at the table. So we are just beginning. We had a first blush, had some preliminary conversations, and we'll continue to look at it and bring something back to the full Board at a Work Session at a later time. We also talked about the composition of the MSOAC. They had sent a letter to you, Madam Chair, to add two new members. We had talked to them, and this was in accordance with their bylaws. And so they are going to add the Fairfax Alliance of Black School Educators and the Asian Educators Association to the MSOAC group. And we also, and everybody listen carefully, we changed again the retreat, and we're making the retreat into a work session. Dr. Braybrand had also requested this, and I thought it was a... Well, not just me, but the committee agreed that it would be better to have a more robust retreat after the start of the new year. And we are making great progress on our strategic plan and, you know, putting our strategic plan with a strategic focus. So Dr. Braybrand requested that November 27, instead of a retreat, we have a work session on the strategic plan.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. McLaughlin, do you have an update from Skip?
Yes, I have a brief one. Ms. Kofax and I met with the Skip Executive Committee meeting on November 1, where we basically got a preview of what the full Skip will be discussing at its December 6 meeting. And we basically will be having two different presentations. The first one will be the School Readiness Plan in terms of a proposed implementation plan and any budgetary recommendations for FY19. And so that was very helpful to see what, again, both the county and the schools collaborating on early childhood education, how we can really continue to close the waitlist and ensure quality preparation for our students when they arrive at kindergarten. And then the second presentation we had had to do with our behavioral health referral system that we have here in the county and budgetary recommendations for FY19. And so we'll be prepared to bring that to you and the Budget Committee. But just some highlights are that we're looking to expand short-term behavioral health services to 10 middle schools, to enhance psychiatric services, to also look at a student assistance program to deal with our substance abuse prevention and intervention programs in our schools, and that we are also looking at ways that we can help fund early childhood mental health consultations. So really good information, great work on the part of county and schools. And I know Ms. Kofax and I continue to enjoy representing the Board in that work.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, for a report on the forum that was held tonight.
This evening, we had a forum topic that was brought to us by Ms. Evans as the representative of the Shack Committee. The Shack Committee had made recommendations for amending our policy on student and staff health and wellness, Policy Number 2100. And the recommendation was to change the language on recess to ensure that it addresses or actually sends a strong message to the community that we take recess seriously and that it shall not be used as a... The withdrawal of recess being used as a punitive measure. And that decision was... We discussed it, and we made a decision to have the Superintendent and his staff take a look at the language, and then we will bring it to a future Board meeting as new business and subsequent adoption. The language that was put on the table was put on the table by Shack that says, "Therefore, recess will not be withheld to manage behavior or used for instructional activities such as completing classwork, homework, or remediation activities."
Thank you. Board Matters. I will begin with Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, it's been productive, a productive couple of weeks. I'm grateful to Dr. Braybrand. I was able to attend his listening tour last night, and I thought we received some really good comments from parents who are very active and participating and helping me to learn what their concerns are. So I was very grateful to be able to be there. I was also able to go and congratulate the students at South County who won a national band competition this past Monday. I got a call from one of their parents and rushed over there to see them carry, I think, about a nine-foot trophy out of the car, out of somebody's van. But they were very, very excited, and hopefully we will be able to congratulate them here, tentatively on November 20. Let's see. Band competition. Also want to make a... I will be at one of the Veterans Day celebrations tomorrow with my fellow member, Ms. Hines. And I also want to just make a note that I am in the process of interviewing people for the committees, and I'd like to be able to put that in the newsletter. I've interviewed maybe seven or eight people as of now, but I want to make sure that I actually have an opportunity to know people and that I also get the word out that people who may be interested have an opportunity to apply. So that is in process for those who are wondering what's going on with the committee members. Thank you.
Ms. Derinette Kofax.
Thank you, and welcome, Ms. Schultz. As Dr. Braybrand mentioned, there was a great turnout last night for his Region 3 tour. There were lots of principals, lots of teachers, and lots of community members. And so thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for doing that, and thank you to all the community members who came out. Tomorrow, I will be attending Veterans Day events at Claremont Elementary School in West Potomac, so I'm looking forward to that. And I also want to thank the community for supporting the bond referendum. 73% of our voters support this initiative for our much-needed capital improvements. So thank you very much for coming out, voting, and doing that. And next week, I am looking forward to my community coffee at Grounded Coffee, which is on Telegraph Road. That will be held Tuesday, November 14, and I'll have that from 9:30 to 11:30 in the morning. The pastries are great. I am buying, and I hope to see you there.
Ms. Schultz, are you ready for Board Matters?
I guess I am. Well, I first of all thank the Fairfax Station Homeowners Association for inviting me tonight, which is where I just came from. I don't thank the Marc Anthony Concert at George Mason University, which is why I got here when I did. I do want to announce a couple of things. I will be at Sangster Elementary tomorrow for their annual beautiful Veterans Day program that's happening not on Veterans Day, as we anticipate our calendar conversation next week. Also, something that's very special that I don't think it's enough of a highlight. Robinson Secondary School is having its Robinson Marketplace on Saturday from 9 to 3. This is one of the best events I've been to. If you enjoy crafts, homemade stuff, just neat, wonderful stuff from members in our community... I don't know if people see, in the winter, I wear a lot of shawls, pashminas. They're all from the Robinson Marketplace, and they're fabulous. Please come out and support. You'll enjoy it. Get your Christmas shopping, your holiday shopping done early. So that was wonderful. And I have... And I have town halls that I'm struggling to schedule with the boards, heavy schedule with Virginia School Board Association and a bunch of other meetings that we have, but I do continue to work on those, as well as my student town halls, so those should be published shortly. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. I think I see Tim Thompson out there in the audience, Tim, who for years has been on the Citizen Bond Advocacy Committee. So thank you once again, and thanks to the community. This community always comes through, and so do you, so thank you. I also want to mention just a couple of things. I am the school board's liaison to the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities, and I made their meeting last night. I sat in on it, and I just, it was a great meeting with a lot of good information. I want to thank the members of that committee, all of our advisory committee members, our people in the community who care enough about what we do to make that sort of commitment month after month, some of them year after year, making a real difference. Also, thanks so much to Teresa Johnson and her staff, and the Parent Resource Center staff, who also presented last night at the meeting, doing so many great things for families. I would note that at every one of the monthly meetings of the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities, there is a public comment opportunity. And apparently, people very seldom show up and comment, and it's one of the things that's an important role for that committee, and they're trying to figure out how they can drum up, you know, more interest, or at least more knowledge. And so I said that I would mention it, and I am, so if you're listening. Their next meeting is on December 13th at 7:00 PM. It's in Gatehouse Administration Center. They meet monthly. So if you have questions or comments that you'd like to make about how well we're meeting the needs of our students with disability, please feel free to come, and I know that that committee and staff will reach out to you afterwards and make sure that you're getting the answers that you need. Also, congratulations to Dogwood Elementary School in Reston. I'm so excited about this. They were named an International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Candidate School. They're only the second elementary school in Fairfax County to get through that, really, the tough first hurdle. And I think it's going to be so exciting. As many people may know, South Lakes High School is an IB school, an international baccalaureate school. And Langston Hughes Middle School, which feeds South Lakes High School, is an IB MYP, Middle Years Program school. So it makes so much sense that at least one of the elementary schools in that feeder has the IB program, and I think it's particularly going to be a great choice for Dogwood Elementary. I just think they are set up really well for that. So I'm excited, and I want to thank Principal Mia Devers there. She has worked incredibly hard on that, I know she has. And so congratulations to them, I'm excited. One more thing, Veterans Day tomorrow, for the first time, I will not be working on Veterans Day, so I am actually going to get to go to Flint Hill Elementary School's Patriots Day, and I'm so excited and really looking forward to that.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For a number of years, I had been able to attend the Veterans Day activities at Flint Hill, but tomorrow, I have decided to attend my neighborhood school, Laurel Ridge. I don't know whether you will be there, Mrs. McLaughlin, but I'll be enjoying their special activities in the morning. And I look forward to seeing at least some of my colleagues down in Williamsburg for its annual VSPA conference.
Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to extend my condolences to the Scarborough family. Renette Scarborough passed away this past week, and she is, or she was, one of the most amazing women I have ever had the pleasure of getting to know. She was all about kids and putting kids first. She did this in her role as a staff member in the Family and School Partnerships Office here in Dunloring, and she did this every day in how she interacted with community members in the Mount Vernon and Lee area. She was just an amazing woman, and I just hope that we all can keep her and her family in our prayers as they put her to rest this weekend. Now, I would like to congratulate the West Potomac High School Lady Wolverines, who the volleyball team, for the first time, went to a regional, won the regional competition as the Gunston Region champs. They did lose to Woodson last night, who will now be going to the state finals, but I am so very proud of the Lady Wolverines. But also, thank you very much for recognizing the South County Band. That is quite a tribute to the success of a growing program down there. I will be at Holland Meadows and at West Potomac tomorrow for Veterans Day. And West Potomac is partnering with the Travis Mannan Foundation in doing a service project all day. For those of you who don't know about the Travis Mannan Foundation, it's an incredible organization that is named after Travis Mannan, who went to Fort Hunt High School when he was in high school, and he served multiple tours in Iraq. The motto of the Travis Mannan Foundation is something that Travis himself said quite often, which is, "If not me, then who?" And that embodies what veterans do every single day, and so I urge all of us to think of that as a motto for how we give back to our society. So thank you very much.
Mr. McAveen.
So the first issue I want to discuss briefly is that of recess. We have been receiving a number of emails from community members who are interested in us, including a provision in our legislative program about recess. And we've also had some dedicated advocates coming to quite a number of our meetings, so it's good to see you all here again. And it's interesting that we not only hear this issue come up in Shack, but also in our RFFK meetings and lunchroom collective meetings, and it's something that lots of people in our community are interested in. As the board discussed earlier tonight, the issue of using recess as punishment is certainly something we do not endorse. And the other issue that I will be bringing before the board is reinforcing our policy, which says that we should not hold recess before lunch whenever possible. So that's something else we'll be looking into. But in the short term, I do want to commend the advocates, because on Monday, we will be discussing this issue at our legislative program work session. It takes some very attentive advocacy to realize that we, the board, is adopting its legislative program in the coming weeks, so thank you for bringing that forward at this time. Secondly, I want to remind my board colleagues that we have only received five student nominations for our student leadership program. Those are due by tomorrow at close of business, so please get those in quickly. We did have to extend the deadline so that our colleague from the Lee District could get a participant, but all of our districts will have someone this year. And then I would like to reiterate comments from my colleagues about the bond. Thank you to all those who worked on our, advocating for that, including those in this room. But one thing I would remind the community, while we're grateful for that funding, that funding provides us with $155 million a year. In order to meet all of our capacity needs, which includes dealing with our trailer issue and other issues, we would have to bring in $270 million a year. So clearly, the county is not meeting its obligations when it comes to funding our schools' renovations, and we need to continue to work on the bond issue. And finally, I do want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day tomorrow, albeit South County and Navy Elementary School. And I do regret that I will be missing the fun at Flint Hill for the first time in my tenure.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Great. First of all, I want to thank the Braddock District residents who came out last night to my evening community hours. It's really wonderful to be able to get that direct feedback. We talked about the proposed calendar that the board will be reviewing at its Monday work session. And for anyone who is still watching the meeting, one of the things I thought was very important for the community to understand, because I've also received a lot of emails from my Braddock constituents, is that the calendar is developed by the superintendent's administration, and then it is brought to the board for deliberation. And so the board is just seeing the calendar, we are just having an opportunity now, and the community feedback is very important. And I certainly feel that a lot of very important information has come to my attention that I look forward to sharing with my colleagues on Monday. We also talked about the budget and what the forecast looks like, and again, the challenges that we face when we look at an economy that just has remained somewhat stagnant and just not growing at the level that we've been used to in the past. I also am excited tomorrow. I have been invited to my Terra Elementary School for their Veterans Day celebration, so I look forward to that. And then I'm actually, was invited to George Mason University to meet with some of their government relations people to talk about not just K-12 education, but how George Mason can continue to be a good partner with Fairfax County Public Schools. I also, in the spirit of Veterans Day, first want to say that as the great-granddaughter and granddaughter and daughter of veterans, I again want to thank everyone watching tonight for your service to our country, including my amazing colleague to my right, for all of you who have served. And I also want to really encourage our families to take a moment over the weekend and help have conversations with your children about the importance of what Veterans Day really is and what it represents. And then I want to, in closing, as a nod to our superintendent's alma mater, Georgetown University, a few days ago, former President Clinton spoke at Georgetown as part of a symposium that was celebrating 25 years since his presidency. And his words are very poignant at where we are in this country right now, and especially with the election yesterday, I thought I would just share these few words. He said, "We at least should be able to treat each other like human beings without assuming the worst. This us versus them thing is the most dangerous thing we are confronting, but as long as people are rewarded for it politically, it will continue." And so he urged Americans to dialogue with individuals with whom they may disagree, and lamented that not enough of this is going on. And so I do hope that both here, in our work as your elected school board, but that we as parents with our children, that we continue to talk about the importance of allowing respectful discourse to happen and to model for our children that we will not always agree on any given issue, and we have to be listening and trying to have a broader perspective throughout it. And we should speak up when we feel that there is injustice. We should speak up if we are concerned about any type of harassment or mistreatment of others. It's unacceptable. But I do hope that we can work toward trying to find our commonalities, because as he closed in his remarks, he said, "America won't be America anymore if the us versus them mentality continues." So here's to finding our common ground as Americans.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everybody who has acknowledged Veterans Day and has intentions to go and join some of the school community at Veterans Day events tomorrow. And I hope everyone will have a chance to say thank you to a veteran as they go through the weekend. Veterans Day is actually, I believe, on Saturday. So, and I guess personally, I'd like to thank all those in my family who have served, and all of those board members here who have family members who have, who they've watched go into service for their country, because in fact, veterans, when they join the service, acknowledge that they're risking their own personal safety because there are values that they believe are greater than even that. And sadly, that is the reality of what Veterans Day is all about. And so lastly, I'd like to thank all of those students in Fairfax County Public Schools who are considering service to their country. There is no higher service than you can do than serving in the armed forces for the values that we believe in. Thank you.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. And I want to give a shout-out to Belvedere Elementary School, which was named a national Title I distinguished school, one of only two in Virginia to be designated. And this, Belvedere is the first PYP-designated elementary school, and it is a fabulous program, so congrats to Dogwood for going in that direction. It's just an amazing program, particularly to have it K through 12 in one pyramid. I also want to thank the principal, Cecilia Vanderheij, and her entire team. They do just a wonderful, wonderful job, and we will be honoring them, both at a celebration at the school and later on at the school board as well. Thank you for everybody who came out and voted for the bond. It was, of course, passed overwhelmingly, but we know that that shows how much support our school system has and very much needed and overwhelmingly passed. Tomorrow, I also will be celebrating Veterans Day by going to lunch at Annandale High School with six classes of ESOL students, as well as staff members at Annandale High School who served in the armed forces, and members of the PTSA. So I'm very honored to have been invited to this, and looking forward to Chef G and her culinary arts students, who are going to be providing the lunch for us, which is always delicious. I always enjoy it when, several times before, when I've gone to have lunch there. And thank you to all the veterans who have served. It is, as my colleagues have said, one of the highest callings you can have, so thank you for all of our veterans out there.
I want to thank all of my colleagues who are going to multiple schools to be a part of our Veterans Day celebration. So on behalf of Fairfax County Public Schools, thank you, everyone, for supporting our students in their effort to understand what Veterans Day means, and to honor those who are active duty. I know many of our parents come in uniform, and in many of our schools, we also celebrate the children of those who are active military, because the children also are sacrificing, and that can be a major event in a family's life. And I will be at Franklin Sherman Elementary School for their Veterans Day event, and it is always a wonderful, wonderful celebration. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.